Call the meeting in order, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Counselor Reese Camp. Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Ulfers.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Counselor Nasser.
Here.
Okay, next up is swearing in and oath of office, Jeremy.
Stand up.
Yep.
Please be after me, I, Jeremy Selvage.
I, Jeremy Selvage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
You solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the United States Constitution.
That I will support the United States Constitution.
Oregon Constitution.
Oregon Constitution.
And the charter and laws of the city of Lebanon.
And the charter and laws of the city of Lebanon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
For which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a consent calendar. I'm not going to read it because it's quite long, but we have agenda, appointments, bid authorization, board minutes, council minutes, and easements.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved, and you'll notice on the agenda, there's no more proclamations, and I will not be signing any more proclamations or doing any proclamations at all, so. Public comments. Do we have any other cards? There's just one. Marcella Ariel Ford? I'm sorry.
So, Marcellus Angel Ford. And I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Aziz, and the other council members that chose not to support the Pride Proclamation. That was the right choice, and it does elevate a certain group of people above another. I read the article that was describing your stance on that, and that was a correct stance, and I salute you for your courage in doing that, Mayor, and there were two council members that were especially vocal about supporting that proclamation, and I understand their reviews, and I respectfully disagree, and as long as that is going to be promoted within the city council, I'm going to be in opposition to it. And not that I am hateful of gay people, but it makes a distinction between one group of people versus another. And to illustrate that, I happen to know two men, these are real people, one lives in Salem, one is deceased. Both of these men chose to abandon their families, abandon their kids, divorce their wives, and to go live a life of depravity, debauchery, orgies, you name it. One of these men is covered by a gay flag. The other man is not. And that gay flag represents one person that supposedly we're supposed to be prideful of. He's got all kinds of gay paraphernalia in his house and yard supporting that. The other man, you know, he chose to pursue women. That was his motive sin. But that gay flag represents a whole lot more than just peace, love, and rainbows. And there's a lot of things that are representative with that that I do not support, do not agree with, and I don't think we should be supporting that any more than we should be supporting the Confederate flag. So, gentlemen and ladies, thank you for hearing me, and thank you for your stance in not signing any more proclamations. I fully support that, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Tanya Nicholson.
Hi, I'm Tana. I read the packet, and I was wondering if anybody could explain the part of the budget that is 1,385% more than what it used to be. It says in the far right corner of the column. As I tried to add up the negative percentages, thinking, oh, okay, well, maybe y'all took it from different accounts, like negative 27%, negative 88%, and add those up to see if that added up to the positive in this one line of 1,385%. So, I just wanted some clarification on that, and I don't know who to ask, so I'm just asking anybody. And I don't know if you answer me directly, or you answer the crowd, or you email me, I'm not sure how we do that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. What line is that? What is the title on the line?
I don't know, because I screenshotted.
Oh.
That part, but the double line at the bottom is, at the grand total bottom, is 86,000, 86,930.
And that's, and that's right below the percentage increase.
Yes.
Right, so what increased are our reserves. We had a legal settlement earlier this year for $12 million, and we are holding that in reserves for future wastewater treatment plant improvements. We have a master plan underway right now. We expect improvements to be required. So, because the settlement was associated with wastewater treatment plant, we're holding that money in reserve. So, it is a significant increase in reserves, not in spending. It will be spent in a future year.
Oh, okay, and so, and then can you speak to those negative percents that are above that? The 88, the negative 88%, the negative, right above that line? It goes right on, yeah, negative 10%, negative 11%, negative 88%.
I did not bring my budget, I'm sorry, so I would need, if you could call me tomorrow and give you my card, I can give you that information.
It's trends out.
Oh.
Non-operating.
Okay, so transfers out decreased. We're trying to clarify what we're doing. So, transfers out non-operating decreased, but transfers out operating increased. Trying to differentiate transfers that we do that fund other operating costs primarily are internal services, where other funds are paying for city manager, human resources, city attorney, city recorder services provided predominantly internally. Those used to be all transfers out non-operating, but since they fund operating costs, we included them in a new classification this year.
Okay.
I know it's kind of technical, but we are trying to clarify how the money is being spent, and the difference between the operating budget, which reflects money that we need on an ongoing basis every year, and the non-operating budget, which may change significantly from year to year based on things like where we have borrowing and we have debt service, or we're doing a capital project. Sometimes the non-operating budget has more flexibility. You can choose to not do a capital project next year, but you can't necessarily choose to just have no human resources next year, for example. So, that's where we're trying to be clearer about what it takes to run the city on a day-to-day basis as an operating cost.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Sure, and you can feel free to call me. I'm Nancy Brewer, I'm the city manager. You can call me and make an appointment and come in, and we can go through it page by page if you want to. Happy to do that anytime.
Okay, and Nancy Brewer?
Nancy Brewer. I can give you a business card if you want. That'll give you my contact information.
I would love that, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
And, thanks, and I just want to thank you for doing such a good job over our festival and all of our department. Really, really appreciate that. Yes, yes, thank you.
Tanya, before you go, I just want to say a big thank you to you, because you're one of the very few people that have come to us to even question anything on the budget.
Yep.
And we need that, and I really appreciate that, and I think everybody here does. It's awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, but I'm not alone. There's a whole bunch of us, but they're kind of, I think, nervous to approach, and it doesn't feel like you guys are approachable or something. And I've been here for so many decades, I'm just like, y'all are just people. I'm just going to ask, you know? I got nothing to hide, and I'm just gonna, I don't care if I don't know, you're not going to get answers if you don't ask.
Well, keep asking.
Mouth, you know, for a whole group of folks that have been, you know, gay, damn it, did you see that?
Well, thank you, and contact Nancy for more information.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, is there a place on the website where I saw in the packet where it says there's like a whole bunch of committee empty spots? And we're looking like for rules like, do you have to live inside a certain ward, or inside the city limits, or winter applications do those kinds of things? Is there a place on the website we're supposed to look for that?
If there are vacancies right now, you can apply anytime. Most
You know, for?
In time to get into the next council packet to be forwarded for council consideration. So, go apply tonight, and it'll be up for consideration at the next meeting. There, most of the advisory boards would require residency in the city. I believe there are two seats on the planning commission that allow either business ownership or living in the urban growth boundary, but otherwise, most of those do require living in the city to participate.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, where their lines are, where their addresses are. I just know that they're just a little bit out of town, so I would have to.
Ask.
They, yeah.
I will. I will, thank you.
Thank you.
There's always no until you ask.
Yeah.
All right, item number one, public hearings. The public hearing regarding the proposed utility rate adjustment is now open at 6:12 PM. Will the engineering services director please present the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight for one of our favorite actions, although necessary. So, a little background on this. April 27th of this year, we provided an update on the utility system. Basically went over all three utilities. We included the financial status of all three utilities, current and future capital projects, and then water production statistics, and also wastewater treatment statistics. So, each year we look at what's called the CCI, or the Construction Cost Index, on a year-over-year basis. So, we would look from May to May. This year, the May-to-May was 8.5% on the CCI. We're not advocating for that tonight by any means, because there's, I think we're doing well enough just to keep up with inflation with the 3% that we're talking about tonight. But to give you another little bit of information, so on a year-over-year basis, we've also had, in some cases, our pipe projects have doubled, so to do a sewer replacement project, that increase is close to double right now from what it was a year ago. So, it's going to take some doing, and we'll have to stay on top of it. The other thing we discussed in that work session was a change in how we do inflationary adjustments. The way we've done it in the past is by each utility, so each utility, say stormwater would get a 3%, wastewater would get a 3%, or water would get a 4, whatever was necessary to keep up with that inflation or cover capital expenses. What we proposed in that work session was to do an overall look at the bill rather than just each individual utility. That gives some flexibility for us to meet things like, you know, any environmental issues that we have, or regulatory issues that we're not meeting, we can meet those. We can look at it from a level, you know, okay, so we got a lot of capital projects in storm drainage next year, so let's focus our efforts and put this X dollars into capital projects in the storm drainage utility rather than signifying one or the other utilities. So, the proposed adjustment this year is 3% of that. There's nothing that would be going to the water system. Most of it would go to the drainage system, and a portion of it would go to the wastewater system to keep up with inflation. And that's really it. I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Questions from staff? I am for staff. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this matter? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this matter? The public hearing is hereby closed at 6:15, and will be limited to the council and city staff at this time. Council discussion and any questions or discussion? Will the city attorney read the resolution title?
Resolution number 2022-15, resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's utility rates.
Call for motion?
I move to approve. Resolution number 2022-15.
15.
15.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Resolution 22-15 passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next public hearing, this public hearing for comprehensive plan map amendment, CPMA 2202, and zone map ZMA 2201, is now open at 6:17 PM. And your patience is appreciated, as our city attorney goes through the required hearing procedures.
The only time you ask for patience is when I'm going to talk, so I appreciate that. Tonight's hearing will be pursuant to quasi judicial procedures set out in ORS 197.763. At the start of each hearing, counselors will be asked to disclose any ex-party contact conflicts of interest or bias. If you have any questions about what those are, or if they apply to you, please feel free to ask, and I'll be happy to answer. The hearing will start out with staff report, include information the staff believes relevant to the issues at hand and how they apply to the city's comprehensive plan and land use regulations. After the staff report, council members are allowed to ask questions of the staff. Following this, the hearing will be open for public testimony. The applicant and proponent of the application will go first, as they have the burden of proof. Any opponents of the application will have a chance to be heard, and finally, there will be a chance for rebuttal if necessary. Testimony may be in oral or written form, but must be directed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report, the comprehensive plan, or the city's land use regulations. Any issue raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient enough to allow the council and party members, members and, party members an opportunity to respond. Please note that the failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing will prevent any appeal to the landed board, land use board of appeals. Following the close of the public hearing, all remaining discussion will be held among the council. The council may approve or deny the application or approve the application with conditions for approval, so long as they are supported by the facts of the case and land use regulations. With that, Mr. Mayor, you may ask for any conflict of interest bias or ex-party contact.
Do any counselors wish to declare ex-party contact, conflict, or bias? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent out in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case? Seeing none, will the community development director please read the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request for a comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map designation for a property that's located at the intersection of South Sanium Highway and Crowfoot Road, with the property address of 4070 South Sanium Highway. The property is located within the urban growth boundary. It is currently designated as residential mixed density, and the request is for it to be amended to the mixed-use density. There is no development proposal identified at this time that would be processed concurrently with this request, so it is simply the change in designation that's being requested. Surrounding the property are definitely a mix of uses, including industrial, residential, commercial, and vacant property, and so the property itself is already within a mixed designation area, although most of the properties are currently zoned residential mixed density. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this item on May 18th, and found that the application complied with all the decision criteria within the development code, and unanimously recommended the city council approve the proposed application. We included the staff report and all of the planning commission record as part of the city council packet, so that you saw the staff reports and recommendations, and all of the decision criteria and recommended findings associated with that decision criteria. And so, it is the recommendation of the planning commission that the council approve the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments to designate the property as mixed use. And with that, I will conclude my report and answer any questions.
Does council have any questions of staff? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening, Brian Vendetta with Udell Engineering and Surveying, representing the applicant. I really don't have anything prepared to present, other than what we'd prepared in writing for the application to demonstrate that we meet all the criteria, but I would like to make myself available if the counselors or Mr. Mayor had questions of the application.
Okay, any questions? Oh, looks good. Thank you, Brian.
Soon to be developed.
We believe we're going to come in with an application after the zone is set soon, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this matter?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The public hearing is hereby closed at 6:22. Council discussion? Seeing none, we'll have the city attorney read the title of the ordinance. Thank you, Kelly.
Ordinance Bill Number 2022-07, a bill for an ordinance amending the Lebanon comprehensive plan map and zoning map designation to establish the mixed-use designations for the property, tax lot 1900 and tax lot 500, file CPMA-22-02, gelot.
Move for approval.
Ordinance number 2983, I forgot that.
Don't forget the ordinance. Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance Bill 22202207 is passed. State revenue sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a requirement in state law for both the budget committee and the city council, a whole public hearing on the use of state revenue sharing, and adopting an ordinance or resolution accepting state revenue sharing. You have a resolution in your packet that does that action. We are estimating $260,000 in state revenue sharing money next fiscal year. It comes from beer and wine taxes levied at the state level and collected and shared out locally. So, we'd ask for you to approve the resolution after taking any public comment that might occur.
Okay. Does council have any questions?
Nancy, is that a sizable increase?
No, it's not. It's not. The state's been selling more, but by the distribution formula, it doesn't equal an equal amount of increase for cities.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, the hearing for state revenue sharing is now open at 6:24. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The public hearing is closed at 6:24 PM. Council discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution number 2022-09, a resolution certifying its eligibility in declaring the city of Lebanon's election to receive state revenues.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2022-09.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Resolution, oh, that's right. Resolution 2022-09 is approved.
I think Gams on a little tape delay, so he's coming in late there.
Okay, got another one? Okay, the city manager will give the staff report.
Thank you again. This is about adoption of the fiscal year 2023 city budget. As noted, the budget committee met in May and has approved a budget to forward to you. I note for the record that the city council can increase appropriations from what the budget committee recommended by 10% or $5,000, whichever is greater. We are asking for two amendments tonight. Both of these are issues that popped up after the budget committee's work was done. One of them is to appropriate $26,384 in funds from opioid settlements from Johnson &amp; Johnson and distributors. This is an amount we expect to receive every year for 18 years coming out of that legal settlement. There is a series of activities that we can use those monies for, about opioid, about stopping opioids in the, in the community, whether it's through rehab, Narcan purchases and training, a number of things, but all centered around opioid reduction, addiction reduction. I expect over the coming months, the police chief and the fire district, and I will meet to talk about what we would do internally with those monies, and then what would be available, and what we might look at in terms of community-wide use of that money, and come to the council with some discussion about that. But we need to get it appropriated in order to be able to spend it next fiscal year. The second amendment, we have been notified, we got a $60,000 grant for some environmental analysis, and we would like to get that appropriated, so that we can spend that much money next fiscal year. Combined, that would increase our total budget for next year to $87,016,545. So, you're asked to conduct a public hearing. Because it's not often that we actually amend the resolution at the table, I would ask you to make a motion, after the city attorney reads the resolution, to make a motion to adopt the resolution, and then a motion to amend to include the two staff-requested items, and then vote on the amendment, and then vote on the amended main motion as the best way because of what's in your packet, in terms of the resolution that was presented tonight, and then we'll take it from there. So, I'll answer any questions you might have.
I have one about the environmental money.
Yes.
Is that targeted, or is it just general, here you go?
It is targeted.
To?
Something that we are working on.
That we're not allowed to talk about right now.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, I understand.
Sorry.
No, no, I get it.
Any other questions?
That was my only question.
The public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2022-23, city of Lebanon approved budget is now open at 6:28 PM. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The public hearing is hereby closed at 6:29 PM. Will the city attorney please read the title of the first resolution?
Resolution Number 2022-10, a resolution levying taxes for the city of Lebanon's budget for fiscal year 2022-23. Is that the right one?
So, we're going to do the?
That is the first one, and I glossed over that one completely, focusing on spending money instead of taking it in. But yes, we do have two resolutions to adopt. One is levying taxes, and the other one is setting appropriations.
I would move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2022, did I have you read the title?
Dash 10.
Thank you, I'm losing it. Okay, approval by Resolution 2022-10. It's been approved. You guys, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
What's that?
All those in favor?
Oh, okay, so we're at the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Phew. Okay, 2022-10 has been approved. Now, do we need to do the amendment to that one now?
So now we do the second one.
That's the one you're going to-
Okay.
The appropriations, and that's the one we would do the amendment on.
Okay.
Like to make that motion to approve?
Okay.
We need the title of it read.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah. We'll have the city attorney read the title.
Resolution Number 2022-11, a resolution adopting the City of Lebanon's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2022-23.
I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2022-11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Now we need the amendment.
Yes, we need to amend that resolution before it passes. So can we just take that as a friendly action at this point?
That was a consensus.
A motion to amend, I don't know. How do you want to do it?
So, let's go ahead, and the people that moved that and for the vote, if they could just amend it, are to withdraw, and we'll start over real quick.
I withdraw my second.
There you go. All right, so withdrawing that. So what we need to do is open, we need to move the ordinance for approval, and then during the discussion, we will move to amend both the person who made the original motion and the person who seconded need to agree to the amendment. And then the amendment can be voted on, and then the overall amended version can be voted on.
Okay.
So we can start over now with the move.
With the amendment?
Not yet. Just move the, are we doing ordinances or?
It's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Move to approve the resolution first.
Move to approve the resolution.
Do I do the discussion now?
Second.
Second.
All right, now we can have discussion, and we need a motion to amend.
I would like to move to amend the resolution to increase the general fund, non-departmental materials and services appropriations by $26,384, and general fund, community development budget by $60,000, as outlined in the staff report and from Nancy.
All right, we need a second on the motion to amend.
Second.
And we need both the first and the second that originally moved it to approve the, agreed to the amendment.
I agree to my own amendment.
I agree to it as well.
Want me to follow Roberts' rules? This is, I actually came up with one that I knew. So now you vote on the amendment, or you can have discussion on the amendment if you'd like, and then vote on the amendment.
Discussion? Okay.
And this is on the amendment, then.
Now we'll have a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The resolution has passed.
And now we will have a, and now you can have discussion on the amended resolution, and then a vote on the amended resolution.
Thank you. It's complex.
Any discussion? And you said-
Just as amended, it would just be Resolution 2022-11. Have I read it yet?
Yeah, you did.
You did read it.
So it's Resolution Number 2022-11 as amended.
There you go.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 2022-11 as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that has passed.
Nine times.
Thank you, Trey. Okay.
You've got to do what you've got to do.
It wasn't me.
For $60,000, yes.
At this point, we'll temporarily adjourn as Lebanon City Council, and reconvene as the Urban Renewal Agency. The city manager will give the staff report.
Thank you. As noted in the staff report, the Budget Committee for the Urban Renewal Agency met and has approved a budget for your consideration. There are no changes offered by staff at this point. So this is an opportunity to conduct a public hearing on the urban renewal budget, and then two resolutions, one to approve Resolution Levying Taxes, and one to make appropriations, after the city attorney reads them, so.
Council have any questions of staff? The public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2022-23, Lebanon Urban Renewal District approved budget is now open at 6:35 PM. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The public hearing is now closed at 6:35 PM. Any other discussion? Will the city attorney please read the title, the first resolution?
Resolution Number 2022-12, a resolution levying taxes for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency's budget for fiscal year 2022-23.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2022-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution has passed. And next up, will the city attorney please read the second resolution title?
Resolution Number 2022-13, resolution adopting the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2022-23.
Move for approval, Resolution Number 2022-13.
Second.
2022.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2022-13. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. And we will adjourn as the Urban Renewal District and convene as the Lebanon City Council. Move into the regular session now.
You're going to be sick of me by the time we're done today. This is our end-of-the-year budget amendments and supplemental budget. We have several items, relatively minor, all of them, but we did have a position reclassification, where we are compensating an employee a little bit more than the budget was. That's $960 between the water and wastewater funds change. The pandemic bonus that you all approved cost $130,500. The ARPA monies are budgeted in materials and supplies and non-departmental. We have no personnel services budget there. So we're recommending moving those appropriations from non-departmental into the mayor and council budget, where we do have personal services budget, and can make that occur. We have had really high development levels this year, which has been amazing. This was also our first year with the construction excise tax, so we need to increase appropriations both for our contract building inspector in the building fund, and our pass-throughs for construction excise tax in the general fund. Those are the four amendments that are all in the resolution identified in the packet. So I'll answer questions you might have. It's not a public hearing.
The building inspector, that's something we contract with Lynn County for, am I correct on that?
No, we contact with Northwest Building Consultants, Northwest, Northwest called professionals, so.
Is that, oh, okay, I see it. Thank you. No more questions for me.
Wanted to thank Nancy Brewer and her team on how quickly they took care of that pandemic bonus. Very well done. Asked several staff, and they said how much they appreciate it and so forth. So thank you for handling that so quickly and efficiently.
Thank you.
Okay. Have the city attorney read the resolution title.
Resolution Number 2022-14, a resolution authorizing a transfer in budget appropriations in the supplemental budget for the City of Lebanon 2021-22 budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 2022-14 resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the resolution has passed. Repealing Lebanon Municipal Code, Chapter 5.02, Business Registration, presented by Alicia Rogers.
Hi, Alicia.
Today I am presenting ordinance 2982, repealing the Lebanon Municipal Code 5.02, Business Registration. In 2021, council directed staff to research the business registration program laid out in Chapter 5.02 of the Lebanon Municipal Code, and identify the program should be reinstated or repealed. Staff evaluated several other communities and other alternatives. The surrounding communities that were evaluated were exploring starting their own business registration program, but were met with significant resistance and concerns from both the community members and their city councils. Detailed report of the results of the research and alternatives were included in the agenda packet for review. It was the conclusion of the research, and that staff will continue to pursue the route of obtaining the business registration information already gathered by the Secretary of State's office through their business registration program, and that council continue to support these efforts as a solution. So based on the detailed analysis and report, it's staff recommendation to eliminate the program. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Alicia, thank you for your work on this. Actually, I have a question for the police chief on this one, because if I remember correctly, part of the conversation in tandem was really, you know, if there's something emergent at a business, that we need to make sure LPD and our law enforcement have a way to contact whoever that business is. So do we, and I'm, to be clear, I'm in favor of removing this, but do we have a mechanism now, then, if something like this happens, to contact a business owner or?
Currently, currently, no. But we are working on a plan to develop something through the community policing aspect, to reach out to all the businesses, get names and numbers, and those that want to volunteer that information. So we do have that. We do have that brewing. It's just a matter of getting it out there.
Okay. And that would be run through the police department, not through the-
Correct.
-community development part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be just us kind of doing an outreach to the businesses and obtaining information for the purposes of emergencies, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And also to clarify, I did talk with Amy at the PD as well, that this does not affect any of the business registration requirements for, or licenses for peddlers, marijuana, OLCC, any of those things are still required through the City Municipal Code.
Okay, will the city attorney read the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 2022-06, ordinance Number 2982, a bill for an ordinance repealing Chapter 5.02 of the Lebanon Municipal Code concerning business registration regulations.
Move for approval or removal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Bill 2022-06. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. City managers report.
Thank you. I'm going to start by reminding you all, it is election season. So it is candidate filing time. We have packets available in City Hall and on the website for mayor and three city council positions for the November 8th general election. Council positions are four-year terms, mayor is a two-year term. I'm saying this for people who are watching more than you in the room. The timeframe for candidates to file begins July 11th and ends at 5:00 PM on August 1st. I'm going to say this multiple times. If you're interested in filing, contact Kim Schaefer, City Recorder. Her information is available on the city's website and in the packet, because this is kind of a kludgy process under state elections laws, and you want to make sure you're following the rules and doing everything right. The officials with, terms expiring December 31st are Mayor Aziz, Council Ward 1 for Oak Creek, Wayne Reese Camp, Councilor Ward 2, Pioneer Precinct, Gamal Nasar, and Councilor Ward 3, San Diego Precinct, Michelle Steinhebel. To be qualified for candidacy, you must be a qualified elector residing within the ward for the council position. Mayor is citywide. You have to have resided in the City of Lebanon for six months immediately preceding the election on November 8th, 2022, and you may not be an immediate family member of a city employee or a seated elected officer. There is information in the city candidate handbook, again posted on the city's website. The deadline to pay by fee or file completed paperwork is no later than 5:00 PM on August 1. You will have to have an appointment with the City Recorder to file that. So again, contact City Recorder, 541-258-4905, or cityrecorder@ci.levanon.org.us to schedule that. Kim wants to make sure we get candidates going in the right direction early on. And then in the city manager's written report in the packet, we had identified Monday of this week, we would be starting the Lynx route to Brownsville. That did get delayed for two weeks, so it won't start until June 21st. Been working with Brownsville on public service announcements and trying to get the word out, and wanting to make sure that that is a successful extension of the Lynx transit system. There would be runs to Brownsville, I don't remember how many times a day, but I believe on Tuesdays and Fridays every week, a round trip. And we have heard from people in Brownsville interested in coming to Lebanon, and people from Lebanon interested in going to Brownsville for a lunch or a visit to the museum or something. So hopefully that will help us expand our Lynx services. So any questions on that, I would try to answer. And that's all from me for tonight.
Well.
I've had enough on the agenda.
Okay, any discussion, questions?
Just one. I saw on the human, this is actually, again, for Chief Stevenson, but in tandem, you as well. I see, and under human resources, that we have four candidates in background process for police officers. Can you discuss how that's going? Did we offer the sign-on bonuses for these applicants, or is this before?
Yeah, this is before.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but out of those four, I have two remaining, and the other two didn't make it to the background process. But, so I still have two out there doing it.
Fifty. Yeah. Okay. Great.
Well, I should note, we have a second recruitment going that closes in the next several days. We have some good candidates, including some potential laterals. So there will be another round of the ORPAT test, the written test, the interview boards, everything else. So it's looking decent, possible?
Yes, looks impossible, yes.
There's light at the end of the tunnel, it's not the train.
Better than it did look.
Yes.
And we are back out for Finance Director. I did have to turn down one qualified candidate who was from Beirut, who I had to let, no, this was not to be positioned to be the CFO of the country of Lebanon. So there you go.
Anything else? All right, items from council? Councilors have anything?
I want to echo what one of the public commenters said earlier today about thanking you for the work over the Strawberry Festival, and of course, the Public Works Department as well, but they're not here, so you're here. But your crew was everywhere, and I know you're short-staffed, and I'm sure it was overtime for some of the officers that maybe would prefer to spend it with their families. So thanking, thank them for their hard work over the Strawberry Festival weekend. It was safe and a very happy event. I know I was there multiple days, so. And I know Gamal, Councilor Nasar was volunteering, and others were, so kudos to everyone that made the festival happen after a two-year hiatus.
Very good.
I'd like to say a few more comments on that. There's so many involved in putting on this festival. And of course, there's a large board, from the princesses to the parade, to the carnival and its vendors, to the entertainment and fireworks. Doesn't happen without them. But I wanted to acknowledge all the city staff for loving and caring for this town and its events. Fire Department was out there in force when needed. Chief Stevenson and the Police Department, Deila Johnson and her security team. The force is definitely with us, all working together to keep our community and festival safe. In addition, Kendra and Tila for being a part of the volunteer team, Alicia Rogers for helping me in a time of need, Jason Williams for all the support and attention he provides to the festival board, and especially the park itself, and his team are always there when needed. I called him on Monday to let him know that due to the weather, his beloved park was trashed. And his response was, "Don't worry, Mr. G, we got it." That is the attitude that gets things done. So Jason, thank you for that. Even Nancy Brewer wrapped the city in the rain right in front of City Hall for the parade. And again, a show of solidarity and pride for our city, our community, and the people who live here. Thank you all. I love this town.
Okay, anything else?
I just would add, I believe Public Works put $8,000 worth of grass seed out this morning, and to try and make sure the park is ready for 4th of July.
It was swamped.
It is a little muddy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was pretty bad. But we made it through it.
We have any comments from the press? Okay. And any other comments from the public?
First, I have to ask, how many attended? Did anybody get a head count for the Strawberry Festival, do we know?
Don't know.
It was an amazing success, even though there was lots of rain.
Amazing success, even though there was lots of rain, so.
Most of the board members were burned out, so those numbers will be coming soon.
Awesome. Okay. So as you know, there's, there's a few of us that put a petition in for the removal of the fluoride for the water in, in the City of Lebanon, and I don't remember the legalities of how it was, you know, entered in, but y'all are the council, so. It needs nothing against anybody personally here, but due to the new medical findings that they've had with fluoride and health, and then also I hear that we're gonna get like, one of these days, 60 miles worth of new pipes because, you know, it ate out, so financially, but I wanted to just let you, I believe in transparency, and, and so I would like to go walk around and talk to different people and get signatures for the petition, myself, but I would also want to, unless I, I'm just called Deila maybe, but I would like to put out just a, a blurb, for lack of a better word, that we're, we're doing a petition, and it's not against any particular person, it is literally just to get a chemical out of the water, and, but on like the buzz or something, and let our community know that we are out there, and then also, petitioners, are we considered solicitors? Like, would we be allowed to just go walk around downtown to our small business owners, talk to them, or is that considered soliciting? Because we don't want to do anything that's not appropriate, and, I mean, or we can just flat-out just stick to all residentially kind of things, or just set up a booth someplace, but just want to do right by our town and, and not break any rules that we don't even know that exist. So anybody got any answers on those?
I, I think you need to talk with City Recorder Schaefer about what the limitations are. Again, initiative, signature gathering is governed by a lot of state law, and so you have to comply with the state law for what you can and can't do, and, and she would be able to give you some information about that.
And I would recommend downloading the state manual for petitions and referendums and initiatives. It would, it would answer those questions for you.
It doesn't talk about our town specifically, and our town has its own little rules and things, and so I just wanted to ask, you're our town, you represent our town, did you guys know of anything, because we don't want to do anything against our own personal city ordinances and things? So I just thought, is there anything special other than the little 26-page thing?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the petition is state, so that's, we're, we're just accommodating that, we have a City Recorder that handles that, like a city clerk, and she will handle those numbers that come in, and if that does pass, if there's enough signatures and it's approved, then it gets put on the ballot for the people to vote. We wouldn't even deal with it, actually, here.
There, there's another interim thing, but, yeah. You, you guys, my understanding, put it that way, that there, that there is an interim thing that can be done even before the entire city because of the way it was applied into our town, and it wasn't, my understanding is, is it wasn't actually a voted-in thing, it was just done thing, and so when it's a done thing, you don't actually have to bring it to a vote if you have enough signatures, and if the city council agrees, so you guys can read up on that part of it. So, because I'm not an attorney, it's just my understanding and reading this stuff.
There are various options available to the council once the appropriate number of signatures are provided and verified.
Right, right, yeah, because the, the Lynn County Clerk's office said they'd be checking all the stuff, so we're being really careful on that, so, all righty, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, see none. Next scheduled council meeting, July 13th at 5:00 PM, work session and 6:00 PM is a regular session. With that, we're adjourned.
I just knew we weren't gonna be able to shut you up at these meetings. Jeez, just hogged a limelight.